The, um, sorry, the January fifteenth, twenty twenty five, Happy New Year Planning Commission meeting, regular meeting for this year. Can we go ahead and do a roll call? We'll start from the right.
Paul Breakman, President.
Pete Halleck here.
Stuart Wooders, President.
Sarah Greslick here.
Welcome, everyone. Okay, so any adjustments or changes to the agenda? Now, I will say that there will be a, hey, um, we will, for old, old business, we'll come to more conversation, but we'll go ahead and remove nine C from the agendas, and you'll find out in a minute about that. So we can, we'll remove that. But any other adjustments or changes or recommendations for the agenda tonight?
You're removing nine C, the pathways?
Yeah, well, you'll
Okay.
Take it, give us
I'll trust you.
Two minutes and you'll find out why.
All right.
Okay, welcome, Linda.
Thank you.
Um, that's fine. So can I get a motion to adopt the minute, the agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay. Okay, how about the minutes from the December eleventh, twenty twenty four meeting? Do we, are there any changes or modifications that need to be done before adopting the minutes? Did we really start at seven oh four? Man, thought I had it on time.
Oh, that was your fault. Council ran over, remember?
I know, I didn't kick him off the, out of the table, but.
Uh, no comments for me.
Okay, can I get a motion to adopt the minutes from last meetings?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, so without further ado, we'll move on to official reports. Council liaison, trustee Sally, please.
Yeah, thank you. We had discussed at the council meeting that over the past month where we assigned out new committees, part of going through that was consolidation of two committees. Previously, one was the Road Commission, can't remember what the other one was, but we consolidated both into an infrastructure committee. Within that scope is pathways and sidewalks, and so rather than, because we were looking to kind of level set, what type, what research do we have so far? What is the actual direction council wants to bring back to the planning commission so that they can continue that? I think it's appropriate to move, bring back the sidewalks from your agenda, being a constant on your agenda, bring it back into the infrastructure committee and ultimately land on a direction coming out of that subcommittee of council. So it's the recommendation of council, we'll bring it back into council of the subcommittee and free up a little bit of your bandwidth.
Yeah, um, any other points that you would want to bring up from?
No, the only other thing that I would have is it would be appreciative when you go into the consideration for the outdoor fireplace padding seating, patio seating, that you, if you could provide any background as to why matters such as this come before the planning commission as compared to the ZBA or other considerations, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
That'll be a question for you. And, and Chris, okay, that'll be good. Um, okay, so, thank you. So as you can tell, we have fewer chairs occupied tonight. So we are in looking for, and council has already put the notification out to fill the two seats for planning. And hopefully by next month, we'll have some recommendations to fill those seats. So as
Do we have resumes in or any?
We have at least one for planning applicant. We have one, don't we? ZBA, okay. So no applicants so far for planning. I don't have a close date on that. So all the information would be available online or you could contact the office. But I thought it was important that we talk about it at a meeting too before we were to close it. So there are currently two vacant seats. Those will remain open and we encourage anyone who's interested to go out online or to contact the office to apply.
And just from my perspective of these positions, anyone that's interested, please feel free to reach out, ask me questions or any of the members of planning as to what it entails, what we do and how you can participate. I will say that when I joined planning commission, I had a kindergartner at the time, so it was a younger, younger family and we still made it work, but also we've, and then we've been fortunate to have villagers that have multi-generational in the area as well on the commission. So we have a very diverse group and so we want to continue that, that trend of having different backgrounds in, within, within planning because it helps, helps us make decisions that represent our neighbors. Those are the main things I wanted to, to bring up from, from, for as chairperson report. Oh, the other thing is, is that I've requested, I'm requesting that we work with the building office to, as we get close to wrapping up ordinances, instead of sending a memo to get confirmation or feedback with regards to ordinance, we invite them to our meeting before the public hearing to make sure that it's clear, the ordinances are clear, that they're easily executable by our ordinance officer as well as building official, because unfortunately, some of the things that we've seen in recent years and recent months with several of the ordinances that we've worked on over the last couple, couple of years has not been exactly clear as to how they've been executed as far as what our intent was. Or there's been ambiguity in how, how they're, or maybe not even-ness in how they're executed across all situations. So that's one of the things that we want to try and avoid. So those are some things that I hadn't talked to you about before, but it became very apparent to me over Christmas, talking to several villagers over Christmas. This includes fences, lighting, and, and burn ordinance. So those are the things that there's some questions about. Okay, any chair commissioners?
Can I give a, can?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Can I go for a second?
You're not on here. Normally, you're like right around, we don't put you in there, but council liaison and chairperson usually jump in there. They, please.
Okay, so a couple of things just to reinforce. Stuart brought it to council's attention about having Bill Dinnan sit back in at pertinent ordinance conversations, and I could not agree more. I think we, we continue to work, you know, at council's direction here as a planning commission and bring Bill in just before we would have a public hearing and make sure that we've dotted all our i's and crossed our t's. Because increasing the communication between council administration and the planning commission is absolutely a priority. And there's so much good work coming out of these different bodies, but not necessarily, we're not all communicating at the same time. I think that's going to help a lot. So in the past, he had been, you know, that had been removed from his responsibilities, but as administrator, I'm perfectly comfortable bringing him back and that is also supported by council. So thank you, Stuart, for thinking about that and bringing that forward to council because I think that that's really important. The next thing that I want to talk about is, and I think we'll probably hear from it from public comment tonight, is I don't know how many of you watched Monday's meeting, but we had some public comments that came through about a pathway study survey that Sarah had put together for some residents. So what we saw was a lot of confusion with that survey because residents who were reading it, we were contacted by a number of them, thought that that had been at the direction of the village or had been the direction of the planning commission or that pathways was a project that was further along than it wa, than it is currently. And if you go back to Monday night, you'll see some of the public comments that we had with residents that were concerned with pathways. I think engagement and communication are some of the most important things that we can do in this village. There is no question that they have, that those efforts need to increase, and I love seeing efforts for community engagement. But when we're putting out a survey or a postcard or a mailer, if it's not in an official capacity, if no one at village administration, no one at council, no one at planning has seen it, then it would need to be framed in that way. And I know that on this postcard, it did say, you know, a neighbor's check-in and Sarah's name is on it, so that's okay. But I think that from the outside, it still looked like a village-initiated survey or at least a planning commission-initiated survey, which caused a lot of confusion. So moving forward, I think the momentum that we saw there is really positive, Sarah, and I appreciate you looking for ways. I would just ask that that doesn't happen again and that we're all on the same page when we're going to do that. Because getting public comment and having council have no idea that this even went out. And myself, I was only notified by residents two days before a council meeting that that had gone out and I hadn't seen it. It's very hard for us to answer questions or address it, and it did have this official capacity about it based on the information that was in the survey and the way it was presented. So moving forward, engaging the community needs to be an action that we're all involved in. I, as the administrator, would at least need to know that that's going out. I think planning commission should work collaboratively on that. We need to be looping in our council members because the last thing we want is for individuals, individual efforts to go out and look like they were messages that were from council as a whole. And unfortunately, that was a little bit of a breakdown on it. So I love the momentum, I appreciate the, the effort, and I think that that's the right direction. We, I would just ask that moving forward, we do it in a more collaborative way so that, you know, we're very clear about where it's coming from and where the intent is there. Go ahead, Stuart.
Can I just, before you say, I just want to, I, this is just general clarification for villagers in general, not just people that happen to be on planning or other, because there are, there's, you know, there's websites out there
Yep.
that look, I mean, they're not official Franklin Village websites, but the material there looks very well done. And it's maybe not be sanctioned from the village. Is there a way that, is there, is there verbiage that can be put in letterhead or for villagers that are concerned and want to write a survey? Because back when we had the short-term lease, there was a survey that went out, not by us.
Yep.
And, 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 and it was presented to us as part of our discussion. Same thing with golf carts. Is there a
You mean the petition?
Petition, yeah, the petition.
Petition surveys. I could absolutely draft a disclaimer, so, I mean, it's only going to be as good as the people putting together the petition. I have no problem working on some tight language that would be a disclaimer that would be asked to be put on any independent. This is not, you know, an official action of the village, what have you. And I, I think that's a good idea and I can definitely share that with planning, but when it comes from outside of that, you know, all that, it would be difficult to have, you know, a different resident who's not watching this meeting, who isn't aware of that, to use that disclaimer language. So I think that when we see those type of things, even though it, it can or it cannot be good data. Not all data you grab is good data too, right? And so we need to be careful in that way too. But I think that when we notice, when we become aware of those, we need to publicly speak to, as to where they're initiated from and say, this is not, while this may be good data, this is not initiated from the village. And in the meantime, if, if planning commission or residents that you know or that you're involved with are looking to this, I would be happy to draft a disclaimer that says, like slap that on the postcard, put it on, you know, your letterhead that says that this is not an official action of the village.
Okay, yeah, because that's, that's, because of our positions, it's easy, it's easy for people to misinterpret us being just normal citizens trying to do, trying to, because we're just neighbors. We just happen to be on this position. And so, and, and at the same time with people, the members of our village that don't have official capacities, they, it has, we've had confusion in the past with regards to the dog, the dog park, where, where villagers said that this is going forward, that we're moving ahead, that's charging forward, come oppose or, or, or support it as if, and there was nobody on planning that even sent that out, and yet someone from the community did. And so it's, it'd be helpful for some guidance to villagers. They sent, they sent out a warning that like, hey, your, your backyard's going to now be a dog park.
Right, and I think, you know, this is something that comes with the territory. You, you could just mention, you could make some tiny little mention of something, and there are going to be people who are, why didn't you tell us about it? Well, it's the first time we've ever discussed it. We're in a planning stage, right? So I do think some of it comes with the territory.
That was golf carts too. Remember, it was the outcry. It's like, tonight was the first reading that we did do the ordinance. What are you guys talking about?
No, I think, I think it's pretty, pretty consistently across the board. If you mention something, if something gets mentioned, people will feel like they're not being included. Immediately will start feeling like they're not being included.
I think that that's a really good point. So maybe the solution isn't trying to, you know, stop all of these separate factions from putting information out. Maybe the answer is when an official capacity engagement goes out, that we're paying homage to it. It's on our website, it's on our Facebook, so that if you're receiving a petition, a postcard, or anything else that, you know, that you can't really tell if it's coming from the village or from someone else, you could go over to our website and say, is it there? And I think that that could be a good solution. And that's just, you know, more communication. So maybe creating a spot, let me brainstorm this and bring it back. I'll find a spot on the website, I'll create a spot, because I think that that's important. Especially in today's day and age, we need to be able to fact-check. And if it's in official capacity, if it is real community engagement that's been from the direction, you know, of any of these boards, then you're going to find it on the village website. If not, it doesn't mean that you shouldn't participate in it. You could if you'd like to, but know that that's not an official action. And maybe that is in conjunction with the fact that we'll put out a disclaimer, but I think that that could be another way to, to kind of sort this out, because that's a good point. And the thing is, is that I don't live in the village, so I don't get that information until a resident comes to me and says, hey, I got this in my mailbox. I don't even know that it exists. So, you know, you're trying to fight a fire when you don't know where it starts. So maybe better communication for what we do endorse and having that easy to find would help clear up some of this.
And I mean, I think we have a duty too, or some, you know, this, the idea was thrown out that we're, someone leaked information from the planning commission. You know, we, how is that possible to leak information from the planning commission? We're being filmed, this is a public meeting, right? And, you know, I viewed it as my job to let people know too. It's like, go out and, and let people, hopefully, you know, some of us have lived here a long time and we know a lot of people. We went to school with them, we went to the Birmingham schools with them. So it is, you know, hopefully you can go out and you can talk to people personally too. And you don't have to be, you're not speaking for the village necessarily, but you could say, here's some things that are going on, you know, may please come to our meetings, get involved.
Sarah, did you have something to add?
I, well, I apologize for any miscommunication. It really was just, so many neighbors had talked about it separately that I was just trying to understand the information of, because it's winter and we were trying to understand what really the scope and the worries and the things we were planning, what to think about. And it really was coming from a well-intentioned place of, I'm just trying to understand, do you guys really want it? Like those sort of pieces that I feel like we keep making start-stop, it was really the sole reason I got involved in the village in the first place, and that was many years ago. And so for me, it was like, hey, we haven't been making progress on it. If it's something that my neighbors don't want, then I don't want to fight for it if it goes against that. So it was really that. I'm sorry for any miscommunication on that end. I only talked to one neighbor who was upset by it and I tried to communicate with him and talk to him about it. But otherwise, I had received many positive interactions with my neighbors from it, so it was just like a balancing act. I can see the conflict of interest. I tried very hard to not make it look official in terms of like trying to play up the bright colors, not using village logos. I even went back to the meeting, you know, that, you know, about political things that went out. I was very intentional on trying to make it not seem village official, just trying to understand that so many people had come in and I didn't have a place to gather their information and thoughts. But, and I apologize for any miscommunication or any toes I stepped on for sure. I, I had been involved in many times, people asking me for my opinions and things like that, just trying to understand, I guess, what your neighbors want and don't want and so that you can serve them better. And, you know, it's a learning opportunity for me. I can learn from this and take the lesson. And I appreciate the communication about it and the, I come from a social work background, so for me, it's just And the, I come from a social work background, so for me, it's just the idea that there's equity and voice, and that everyone has an opportunity to be heard, and I don't think a lot of times, people come to these meetings, and I want to hear what they have to say, and I feel like oftentimes, we miss that piece somehow. So, I was really just trying to say, hey, I'm your neighbor, you've seen me around, you've seen me, me and my kids around, my dog around, all of that. And I think that, that speaks to what Pete was kind of saying, of just like, you're a neighbor, you know, like, you're here because you love your neighbors, and you love your neighborhood, and you wanna serve your community, and that was really my intention, and I apologize, and I will do better going forward.
I think, I think the big thing coming up, all of it though, is regardless, you know, it was good intention, I, the initial was great, it got the village talking about it, and that's what we've been trying to get them to do for two years. So, I, it's a good thing.
Yes, yes.
Engagement is a good thing. It just needs to go, but I absolutely agree that there's been a lot, there has been an absolute hole of community engagement around here, that, that hasn't really happened, and I understand wanting to encourage that and reach out to these people. Like, everything you just said there, Sarah, about communication and engagement and accessibility is important, and I agree with, and I wanna support you on those efforts, you know, and so, we will work together to do those kind of things, or to get them out, because, like you said, I don't think the survey was bad. Actually, the survey was well-written, it just caused confusion about where it came from, how far along is the pathway project, are we going to be buying easements, are we gonna be requesting? It turned into a big thing, when really, that wasn't its intent. So, um, no, I just, I think it's a good learning opportunity, and we're learning too. I'm your new administrator, I prioritize things differently than Roger did, and vice versa, so, these are opportunities for us to work together. And as we're talking about pathways, the decision to kind of pause pathways was a combination of Streetscape and Stormwater, together into an infrastructure group. And that's because Streetscape, as its own project, has kind of wrapped up. Stormwater, we put in a lot of money and did a comprehensive study over there, that's kind of wrapped up. So, to bring them together, and the intention isn't to, to take away any momentum from pathways, it's to actually get some real direction about where we need to prioritize, and what we need to tackle first. And I can tell you that, I'm planning on leading a strategic planning session with our council members, and pathways is absolutely something we're gonna talk about, because for me, we need to align on what our priorities are, so we can actually get things over the finish line, and that involves community engagement. So, in no way, shape, or form was removing pathways back over, do I see that as permanent? Probably not. And, um, it wasn't to, you know, it, it really is to give it more momentum, more teeth, and better direction. And I will be communicating what happens in those infrastructure meetings over here with planning, so that we're all on the same page. As we narrow in on goals, I can see that coming back to planning. So, the hard work that you've been putting in pathways is not for, it was not wasted. It's got a pin in it, until I can get some more direction, and then we'll run with it. So, I think that this is just us shaking it out, and kind of learning a new way to work together, but it was just something that I, I wanted to mention, and, and that's really all that I have.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so, if, um, if, let us, you know, if we can somehow make it known how the official communication path for official things are gonna be documented on the website, or where to find it.
Yep.
That'd be awesome. And then, if you could provide some sort of letterhead or guidance for, with regards, so, if we were to send something as a neighbor
Yes.
to make sure that it's known as a, as a, as from our neighbor, hope something more identifiable to our neighbors, that it's not, this is from me personal, not from the village.
Absolutely. I will, I will get that done by next meeting for us.
Thank you. Uh, zoning liaison, or any other commissioner comments? Sorry, cut you all off. All right, okay. Zoning liaison.
Uh, no, is there
You have a meeting next month.
Ooh! But the one for tomorrow is
Cancelled.
Cancelled. I'm assuming that's the item that's on our agenda tonight? Is that what happened, or, okay, that's what I thought.
Okay.
All right. Um, okay, uh, communication update, anything, Sarah, for communication? No? Okay.
And we're still working on the communications plan as a whole. Remote participation is something that we're so focused on, we're getting that, and honestly, I would consider a lot of the conversation that we had tonight to sort of fall under communication and community engagement. So, um, I'll have more to report on that next month, when I create space on the website for these postings, and have some disclaimers and stuff to talk about there, but, uh, still making movements on that, and should have more direction at next month's meeting.
Thank you. Awesome. Okay, um, anything else? We'll move on to budget and expense report. So, um, this is the latest as of last week, right?
As of last month, we have, we have not received the latest invoice yet.
Okay. All right. So, any questions on the budget?
No.
Okay. All right. So, then we'll move on from budget and expense report. Um, really, we don't have a lot that's to talk about without any, generally. Public comments, okay, so with public comments, we have, um, two, uh, old business and one new business discussions. Um, so if, if your topic is on the agenda, um, feel, you're more than welcome to come up for public comments, or, um, you're also welcome to discuss or bring up, um, points during those topics. If there's anything outside of those topics, that, um, you're, um, we encourage you to come up now, so. Since we just removed pathways off the agenda, you, if you wanna come up, you can as well talk here.
Sure.
Yeah, sure. All right, thanks.
So, my name is Rich Nunzianti, I live in the northeast section of Franklin, and, yeah, I do wanna talk about pathways. And I'm not quite clear at this point with the discussion that we had, whether the idea of carving pathways into our neighborhoods on private property is still sort of an open item that may be in the planning stage, um, or even prior to that. I mean, I, I can't quite tell where, where that idea is. I understand the, the discussion we just had about the survey and so forth.
Just to clarify a few things for you, just so you know that, you can speak more to, with more information. So, right now, the village does have property that we can put pathways on, and so, those are our priorities right now. But connectivity of the village is something that we would try, we're trying to improve, and that's part of what the infrastructure group is going to work on. And in some of those cases, um, there are opportunities, potentially, if neighbors are willing to put, um, allow it for easements, to, um, for, for villagers to use as path, as a pathway, that could be an opportunity, but it is, it is, um, it's not an activity that's being pursued actively.
Okay.
It's, right now, the, the priority are the areas that we, of the village that we do own as a village, as, as a village. Um, uh, I think Seen Court Lane, um, there's already a path there, it's mulched, but not maintained as well, as it could be. Um, the Gen Stand property, where we have, um, the village, the museum, there's a walking path area that's been overgrown, that could be improved for people to walk on, um, the, any connection with regards to the, not the FCA property, because they own the, um, the property here, but, um, there's, there's property the village owns along there, is that doesn't make sense to put a pathway to expand what FCA's already done, things like that. Those are, those are the current things that we can act, potentially consider doing more actively, or more, more, more soon.
And your opinion and your input
Yes, please.
is welcome.
Great. Go for it.
Since I prepared some remarks, I might as well dive in.
Yeah, please, please go ahead. I just wanted to give you a little more background, that's all.
Sure, sure. Well, I appreciate that, yeah. Um, yeah, I might actually provide some levity, I guess, sort of. So, Monday night's, um, village council meeting was sort of a Twilight Zone experience for me, because I did come to, to express my opposition to the idea of creating pathways through people's yards to connect one street to another, uh, in these pockets of, of streets within the village, based on the red circles on the map that was in the survey. So, um, while I appreciate the intention of connectivity and so forth, I strongly oppose the idea of doing that, the, carving the, the pathways for security. You know, we had, uh, Chief Lawson here, talking about issues in security and so forth, uh, in the village and in the area, particularly with criminals, I hate to sound dramatic, but, uh, people scouting the neighborhoods and so forth, and then following FedEx trucks and so forth, and planning home invasions and so forth, which have happened recently. So, my concern is security, really, and having these paths through people's backyards, or adjacent to their property lines and so forth. I live on a pretty wooded, uh, lot, and my neighbors do as well, so, we don't want any, any, we don't wanna make it any easier if we'd be able to pass through from one area or one neighborhood to another. So, that's, that's purely my concern. You know, um, we don't need to give our police officers more work, I'm sure, they have plenty to do, and they, patrolling these little pathways in these pockets throughout the city, or, sorry, throughout the village, they just don't necessarily need to do that. Or, they don't, and they don't need to be put in any extra situations that put them at risk. So, um, that's kind of it in a nutshell. I mean, I appreciate the explanation about this whole thing.
Can we ask a couple of questions, if that's all right?
Yeah, of course.
Is it, is it okay, appropriate? Okay, so, the question I, what, so, you're, thank you for sharing that, because, um, I, I don't recall, and maybe someone has brought that concern up before, but I don't recall that concern being brought up before. So, I appreciate that thought, because it's not been something that, um, that we've, um, actively considered, um, as, 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 as a, as a concern, um, at least I have not. The, the question I do have about that is, would, um, I grew up in a community that had pathways throughout behind houses, behind fenced houses, um, and the requirement there was, um, basically dusted on, there, you can't be, you're trespassing, essentially. So, if you're, if it's dark out, you're trespassing. Would that alleviate any of the concern, or is it because of the fact that there is a path?
No, because we have people going right into driveways, rummaging through cars with people in, in their houses, you know? Uh, I think people know that they're trespassing, they're going onto private property, or into what looks like, in the case of the pathway, it looks pretty much like a private property. So, no, that, that would not deter
Okay.
the people that we don't want there, honestly.
So, I, I, can I ask a question? So
Sorry.
if, if, if certain, because we do have the, like, Roseman Lane, for years, there was a path connecting Roseman Lane to Roseman Court. Those people who are quite isolated could come down. It used to be open, everyone used it, all sorts of walking places where the kids would go to school.
Sure.
They were all known, you know, they weren't official.
Right.
Um, so, if other areas, other of your neighbors felt that they would like to, uh, have something like that, and that the neighborhoods would like to, would you feel that it would diminish the safety of the village as a whole, to do something like that?
Well, I can speak to only my neighborhood and where I live, but, absolutely. I do, I do think so. I do think so. It could also affect, I'm assuming, I don't have professional knowledge about this, but my own homeowner's insurance, you know, if there's a public pathway now on the side of my property, I'm concerned about my own homeowner's insurance, because policies are being canceled left and right for ridiculous reasons. The village has insurance obligations as well, so I'm curious about the liability, or, in terms of safety, but also, what if somebody gets injured on this pathway? You know? I don't want our village taxes to go up to support increased insurance premiums, or paying damages to somebody who got insured, or injured. Um, yeah, I have concerns. And, and I, and I don't wanna sound paranoid, but I'm new to Franklin, I've been here for four years, um, and I love it, because it's quiet, and we have a walkable street already, we have a walkable neighborhood. But before I moved here, I was in a bank robbery where I thought I was gonna get shot, I was in a car, a road rage incident, where some guy threatened to pull me out of the car, just for going too slowly up the street. And then, just last summer, I was in a hit-and-run at a gas station on Telegraph, where some crazy lady did thousands of damage, thousands of dollars of damage to my car, and took off and gave me the finger as she left. So, while Franklin is calm and quiet, as far as we know, generally, we can't put our hands, uh, our heads in the sand, and just pretend we're in a bubble. You know, I live, I can see Telegraph from my house, so there are a lot of people going by every day, and could easily come, come in and out, you know, and on a hidden path with, you know, that's in our neighborhood with my, not, again, not to sound dramatic, but I have an 85-year-old neighbor who lives by herself, you know? I don't think she'd be comfortable with that. I certainly wouldn't, and I could probably do something about it if I had to, not that I want to.
Yeah.
So.
I appreciate your comments and, and sharing that. Any other questions?
No, I thought it was, I, the survey, well, I wanted it was to bring up issues like that. I mean, it's something, like Stuart said, I wouldn't have thought of, and my neighbor was the one who told me about the pathways that were assumed in our neighborhood, when, you know, he's the only original resident there. So, he was like, gosh, I really miss having, like, all the neighborhood kids, and everyone would play base, those sort of pieces. Um, but your perspective is really valuable, and I appreciate it so much, so thank you for sharing.
Yeah, no, thank you, I appreciate it.
Uh, any other
Thank you.
Anything else for public comment? Awesome. All right, thank you very much. Um, so, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for regulations on governing the burn ordinance. So, we'll open up public hearing, which we say are quiet, and our public is welcome to make comments based upon the public hearing. Chris, would you like to kind of introduce?
Sure, I'll just, uh, review, uh, our November 21st, uh, version of the ordinance. The, uh, current revision, uh, was, um, based on comments offered by, uh, now trustee Ferris, uh, also state regulations set forth in the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act, Public Act 451 of 1994, and the administrative rules related to Public Act 451. Open burning is regulated by the state under the Solid Waste Management and Air Pollution Control legislation and rules. Also, the outdoor burning model ordinance that is available on the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy website, and also, we, uh, consider the existing regulations in Section 307 of the Village Code. Now, the actual regulations are, um, greatly simplified, based on, uh, some of the earlier versions that were, uh, reviewed by the planning commission. There are basically, uh, seven or six subsections. The first subsection deals with applicability, and talks about where these regulations are not applicable. For example, they do not apply to grilling and cooking of food, um, they do not apply to, uh, burning for the purposes of generating heat, uh, in a stove or furnace, things like that. The second subsection gives definitions, so, for example, it gives the definition of a bonfire, an occasional large, not to exceed eight feet in diameter, controlled fire, built in a field or large open area for the purposes of entertainment or celebration. It gives definitions for campfire, um, it gives the definition of open burning, which is, uh, basically the definition out of, um, the administrative rule 299.4101 of the solid waste management control rules. Gives the definition of refuse. One of the most important definitions, it gives the definition of regard waste, which is out of the state regulations. And, uh, the definition of yard waste is leaves and grass clippings. Now, um, you'll notice it does not include logs. The existing, uh, ordinance in the village includes logs and yard waste, but the state regulations specifically, uh, do not include logs as yard waste. So, uh, the existing regulations are in conflict with the state law. So, this third subsection, uh, deals with the burn permit, and a burn permit, uh, as specified here, is required for any open burning of yard waste and bonfires. And it's something that can be obtained online, it's a fairly simple, um, permit to obtain, and, uh, basically, you specify the date, the hours, and the purpose of the fire. And then, uh, the fourth subsection deals with the general regulations, such as, um, the fact that the, uh, the fire must be constantly supervised, setbacks from structures, uh, fire extinguishing equipment, uh, the fact that open burning of refuse is prohibited, and, um, the, um, regardless of whether a permit's been issued or not, if, um, the fire department finds that wind weather or other conditions are, uh, of such a nature to cause a fire to be a potential hazard, uh, then you, you're not allowed to burn, or if the governor has issued a burning ban, or if the, uh, Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy has declared an air action, air quality action day, applicable to the village, then you're not allowed to burn. air quality action day applicable to the village, then you're not allowed to burn. Then the fifth subsection deals with regulations concerning open burning of yard waste. Some specific regulations dealing with, with that particular aspect. And then the final regulations, subsection deals with regulations concerning bonfires and campfires, some minor regulations of what sorts of things you can burn in bonfires and campfires. And the fact that they have to be, campfires have to be contained in a fire ring made of metal or rocks. So it's a fairly straightforward and simple ordinance in its present form. And it's totally consistent with state regulations.
So, public comments are welcome at this time. We'll hold our comments until after we close the public hearing. If there are no public comments, well, please then, thank you, trustee.
Yeah, just for clarification, Chris, you had stated that there's a conflict between state law and our current ordinance. And that may tie into something that I had questioned in the introduction, not in the actual ordinance itself, but it says, "As discussed in November 20th, state rule, allow only burning of leaves and grass clippings in city, in cities and villages." Burning of trees, logs, brush, and stumps is prohibited. Is that prohibited by state law or by village ordinance?
That's prohibited by state law.
Okay. Then I would ask, to the extent that we're citing something as prohibited by state law, could we associate a footnote with the citation to the law?
Yeah, I, I can certainly do that. It's actually footnoted in the, in the regulations. But I can note that in my letter when I send it to council.
Okay. It's, um, it's footnoted in here?
Yeah, on the first page.
Is it the 299.4101?
Yeah.
So I looked at that and I didn't see anything prohibiting.
No, um, it's the footnote two, actually. I'll have to, it doesn't give the exact specification. I'll, I'll put, I'll make sure that's included.
Yeah, that's very helpful. Um, I guess my question would be then, and following that, under the presumption that burning of trees, logs, brush, and stumps would be prohibited, then how does that reconcile against the, the last subsection, which is for bonfires and campfires? So if it doesn't permit for logs, branches, stumps for burning, that would include, I, I guess that would be regardless of what you're burning inside of?
Right. You're not, it's an open, open burning is, does not have a containment structure. So you're making a pile and burning it. And so, so that's the difference. So if you have a campfire, it has a ring that's either metal or, or, or stone or, or other material, whereas open burn, it's a...
So I would, I would suggest maybe a revision to the definition of open burning then, to be more explicit within that because it's talking about without passing through a stack or chimney, it's not talking about the actual containment of a ring, which I think is what you are more suggesting.
No, there is no containment of a ring in an open burn.
Right, and that's what I'm saying is that...
Or burn barrel, or, like, that's a, yeah.
Right, but it says without passing through a stack or a chimney, is, do we consider to be a stack or a chimney like a fire ring?
No, that would be like in a fireplace.
Yeah, and that's how I interpret it. But what I'm saying is, open burning says kindling or maintaining a fire where products or combustion are emitted directly into ambient air without passing through a stack or a chimney, including the use of a burn barrel. So that would read that a burn barrel is insufficient. So my point is, is we're limiting to unless it's contained within a chimney or a stack, it is open burn.
No. That's not how I read it, but...
That's not how I read it.
This is the exact definition out of the state regs. So I'm sort of hesitant to change it.
Okay, um, not a problem. What I, again, I will say though, that I went to the citation to try and piece all this together. And within that, again, I think, one, they define open burning with two subbullets that we only captured one on. But then further within the code, specifically 299 dot 4128, open dumping and open burning, under subsection three, open burning of solid waste is prohibited except as provided in subrules four, five, six of this rule. Six reading, a person may burn trees, logs, or brush and stumps under R299 dot 4110.
Are you sure that's allowed in the village?
Well, that's what, that, that's what I'm trying to reconcile because again, I, how are you all reading the definition of open burning? Because to me, a plain reading of it is not suggesting that it has anything to do with like a ring around it. I think that we should explicitly call that out, that open burn is without...
Open burn, open burn is a fire that is just sitting on the ground with nothing around it protecting it or going through a chimney. So essentially, if you had an open ring and you make a chimney above that, that because a funnel at the top, that's a chimney. So then that's not considered an open burn, that's allowed to be a fireplace or some...
Right, but I'm trying to solve for your common person's fire, like your backyard campfire.
It's a campfire, and that's a campfire, which is controlled fire built for cooking, lighting, and generating warmth. Campfires shall be contained in a fire ring made of metal or rocks. So campfires is defined as that in two sep, it is in two separate spots because they are, one is a concern about bonfires and campfires, and the other is the definition. Because I used to have an open burning pit in my yard. It was in the back of the yard. There was no, it was an open field. It was throw shit in there, sorry. Throw crap in there and burn it, just to get rid of the waste. And that was an open pit.
Correct. What I'm saying is, is that I believe, and I could be wrong on this, but I'm pretty sure that you start out at, or open burn, that's an umbrella term, right? And then with, in that, you begin to narrow. We haven't done the actual narrowing. So we haven't said an open, you know, the, the rules under open burn do not apply to a campfire, for instance. So to give indication that only a portion of these requirements would apply to, would one, not prohibit it, and two, would not apply to a campfire?
Well, but there's direct conflict between the, what an open burn is and what a campfire is, because in open burn, you can burn things that you can't burn. You can't burn certain things in open burn that you can burn in a campfire. So it's not, if you look at a Venn diagram, open burn is not larger than a campfire in that regard. A campfire is bigger than, in what you can actually burn, a campfire has a bigger variety of materials that can be burned versus an open burn, which is just leaves and grass.
I mean, I guess I would, I would say that they are within the Venn diagram in that bonfire and campfire are subsets of open burning, it looks to me. Even though, because we have not defined open burning to allow for, you know, distinguishing. So I, I see David's point.
Okay, so then we should add, then if that's the case, I would say, I would recommend adding under the 307.6.
Just for point of order though, can we, can we close public comments, and, and the public hearing? Because this is more appropriate for afterwards, that's okay. Sorry, I, yeah.
Nope, I, that's, I agree. And Chris has something to say too.
Yeah, the reason that we have bonfires and campfires in here is because they're included in the existing ordinance, but under the state regs, they don't address bonfires and campfires in the same vein as open burning. So really, bonfires and campfires are not open burning.
It seems like we need to make that clear.
They're controlled burning.
Right.
All right. So let's, if there's no other public comments for the public hearing on this, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Oh, yeah, please, yes, this is your time.
I apologize, I'm not familiar with the, the ordinance, but I just have a question. Is there anything in the ordinance that, that says what to do when a burn of any of these kinds becomes a nuisance in the neighborhood or a nuisance to neighbors? And what constitutes maybe a nuisance? You know, is somebody running, using a smoker and throwing leaves and things like that for a couple of days straight, filling the neighborhood with smoke, you know? What, is that considered a nuisance and what recourse is there?
So we do have, I guess we, we suggest that the, in fact, it's a requirement that the yard waste be dry so that we do have clean burning fires. It's, it's difficult to quantify smoke, often a challenge. I mean, you bring up a good point. I think what we've been using as a guiding principle on this is smoke and safety. And it is challenging, but that is how it's addressed. Dry, dry materials generally do not produce a smoke nuisance.
And if I can add something to that comment, if, it isn't, once it's, it's ratified, it will be enforceable. So if, for using the word nuisance, you know, if you, you were a neighbor who was saying that this is a nuisance, that would be something you'd call the village with, we'd have code enforcement go out. And there, there are ways to enforce that proper burning is happening, and it has been drafted with that lens.
And 37 dot four dot five and point A, it says, "If wind, weather, or other conditions are deemed by the fire department to be such in nature as to cause the fire to be a potential danger to persons or property within the village," and I would assume that, I mean, I, not, maybe not assume, I include in person dangers to, like asthma
Yep.
as being a personal danger, right? So if that is, if, if you don't know your neighbors well enough to know that your neighbor has asthma and you're burning, hopefully you're not burning around the clock because you will get no sleep to follow this ordinance, because someone needs to be awake during the fire. And, yeah, so the, you can call the fire department to have, have it put down, put away, yeah. We've actually seen more of a problem with people having fires and then not attending them. And that's, 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 but it is a concern, especially in the historic district, where the houses are much closer. Where leaving your window open and all of a sudden, your neighbor's open burn fire causes a problem. So, yes.
And fire departments have ways to measure that. And, and so, yes, if there were, and if you, if any resident had any concern about a fire, they should call the fire department immediately and they'll come out and look at it.
So at this time, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing unless there's other public, public comments. And we will move to old business, which now opens.
Have comment?
We're still, yeah, we're still on it. Yep. So now we'll move to open business, A, which is consider regulations for governing open burning. So, now we can have our, trustee Solly, please, let's continue the conversation we had, we're having earlier and, and clarify, anything that needs to be clarified. If, and, and Chris, I think you were explaining, it's just a minute ago, how bonfire and campfire is, is defined by the village, and what does that mean relative to open burn? Since it's, those are not defined by the state statute.
Yeah, I think, well, I see they are included in the state model ordinance though, the outdoor burning model ordinance. Campfires and small bonfires for cooking ceremonies or recreation are allowed, provided they do not cause a nuisance. But they're sort of separated from the open burning regulations.
I mean, could we just add a sentence indicating that bonfires and campfires are not considered open burning under the open burning section?
I think that would probably be appropriate.
They aren't considered that.
I would agree to that. That would be the easiest addition.
I think that would be appropriate.
No, that's good for me as well. Go ahead.
I just, I think especially in light of what's happening with our neighbors in California this week, this is really important. And I think that our biggest challenge is not that people are burning leaves and grass clippings, but that they're burning leaves, grass clippings, and the twigs that turn into branches, that turn into logs, and that, is there a real chance of getting out of control? So.
Which is, which is, with an over, which is why we limit that, right?
Right, right. You know, I, I question the number of people that are gonna sift through what they're raking up before they burn it. And I think it's important that we have something that is enforceable, because if we do have somebody that's violating that on a regular basis, it will be nice to have something to enforce.
Again, the enforcement of it is up to the neighbors that deem it's a nuisance to report it to the village and the fire department. And then that's how it's enforced. It's, if it's bothering you, it's, talk to your neighbors. If they don't agree with you, reach out to the village.
Can I, I don't know, I had a question about, for campfires, wooden pallets. Is that a recommendation? And, like, I don't understand that at all, because there's nails, there's, I mean, I don't know.
As somebody who's used wooden pallets as fuel before, it's common sense for a person to use that fuel to take them out fire, fire. So I'm assuming if you're using wooden pallets is...
Then it becomes scrap wood.
What?
Then that becomes scrap wood.
Yeah, and then I can burn scrap wood.
A pallet. But good luck fitting a pallet and a four-foot ring. So you have to break it up anyway. Anyway, I, I personally would like to strike wooden pallet, personally, I just don't. I don't see use for that, but, and, and scrap wood, I'm worried, sorry, I know we're talking about this. Scrap wood, like, can people just not burn womanized lumber?
Oh, yeah, the composite, yeah.
Yeah, so, like, that's, that's not considered scrap wood, right? I mean, there's gotta be some sort, it's illegal. But there's, the ordinance doesn't call that out, and I just realized that, I'm like, and scrap wood.
So you want to make an exception for...
There, there is an element of that being a tradition. That people do use, you know, wooden pallets. You do see that in especially celebratory bonfires. It's not a common thing. That's only, that's, I just, you know, I'm in favor of the liberal burning allowance for the traditions of Franklin that have gone back many, many years, even on these large open lots. I mean, I see your point. We don't want to encourage craziness.
You don't really know what was stored on those pallets and what's seeped into those pallets. I mean, we used to let our kids ride in the back of cars without car seats and, you know, smoke three packs of cigarettes.
Hey, half the houses in the village have asbestos.
Good for us now.
Half the houses in the village have asbestos and lead in them still, so.
This is the challenge I run into, because scrap wood could be considered OSB. It could be considered MDF. It could be considered things that have glues and chemicals inside.
Right.
And whereas, you know, dimensional lumber, like a pine tree, pine, pine is technically scrap, scrap wood, but you use as kindling, you cut it down to size and use it like kindling, that's not the same thing as, as OSB or, or womanized lumber or MDF. Like, and I don't know, is there a better definition for scrap wood? Because I'm, I can see having to defend this to council and it being, it being a hangup.
You could say scrap lumber. I, I think it is, it's illegal to burn what you call womanized woods, any of the pressure-treated woods. And it may well be illegal to burn the OSBs as well. So that's just a, you know, you could say scrap lumber, which would be hardwoods or softwoods, just like what trees are made out of.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Or the other way around.
I'll come up with the definition of...
How about just chemically untreated or?
Natural?
Yeah, natural lumber.
Natural?
I would just, I would just do, in beginning of definitions, add the definition wood, and then say anything natural, lumber, as opposed to going nitpicking every single place where we have it. Because wood is, I think the definition of wood for this ordinance would be better.
And I think we have to go back to what we always go back to. We're not drafting these ordinances for the average person. The average person is going to know. You're gonna have the common sense. But we're drafting it for the person that doesn't... But we're drafting it for the person that doesn't have the common sense and that is upsetting your neighbors, and I think a little bit of ambiguity could definitely work in our favor.
Yeah, so, okay.
I do have one point of clarification, just so I know. When, under three oh seven point four point five, all of that information, is that easily accessible on, like, that you could find that any of those hazard alerts or anything like that? Is that on the burn permit, so that way people have a way to check?
On the burn permit?
Okay, but, no, I mean, like, is there a way for them to check? Yes, there is not an air quality issue today. Like, I'm just saying, like, wondering, if someone doesn't know where to look for it, is it just easily accessible that, hey, I'm putting on a permit for this day? Oh, I recognize that there is an air quality day, can't do it today. Like, I just want to know is that easily accessible somehow for those people on the burn permit?
It's on the, the Michigan, for example, if the governor issues a burning ban or the Eagle issues a burning ban, that would be on the state website, obviously. But also, air quality action days are always, the news stations always-
No, I get it, I get it, I'm just saying, if someone wants, they can have plausible deniability of, I'm just not checking those places, don't recognize it, and then they go ahead and sign up for the permit, it may not be caught, whatever, I'm just saying, it doesn't feel like it's accessible information that they then have to go check the state of Michigan. I recognize that it pops up on my cellphone, hey, bad air quality today. But if you're not thinking through all of those steps, or it can even say, like, hey, have you done these things, check, like, just some accountability that that's happening.
Have you been to the burn permit website?
I did, and like, I just felt like, reading this and then reading that, it was hard to reconcile.
Well, that's the old one, too, that's probably-
Okay.
That's why we're doing this.
I know, I'm just trying to make it as easily accessible for us to make sure villages are-
It's gonna make sense when we get through this portion, then we can update.
That part, I just want to make sure that's, no.
You can regulate what links are there for people to-
I can.
Yes.
And the other thing is, though, it's very common that you apply for a permit, we won't know that there'll be an air quality issue that day. So we wouldn't give you any information, because we wouldn't know that. That is definitely the responsibility of whoever's getting the permit. But I can say, when you get that permit, that we're gonna give you a copy of the ordinance. So that kind of takes away that deniability, right? Because then you could look through the ordinance and say, you know, oh, okay, then, you know. It would be possible. And I can also say that if fire department comes out, because you have open burn and it's an air quality issue day, you don't know about it, I would think that it would be, you know, I doubt sincerely that you'd receive a citation. I think it would be a much more of a conversation, hey, did you know that today there's, there's no burning? This needs to go out, you know? So I think that having copies of ordinances are important with permits, so that people can cross-reference that. But that's not something we would be able to actively manage, because you don't often apply for a permit on the day you're gonna use it.
Although it might be protection for us to put some kind of a disclaimer or something in bold on the website, saying, "The day of your burn, you should check."
Yep.
This, this, any list of websites and-
We can definitely add something like that to the permit once the ordinance is passed.
Yeah, I just wanted to make it as easily as possible for people to follow it in a thoughtful way.
Cool.
Did we change the method of getting, obtaining a permit? Is the fire department involved with it?
It's still the fire department.
Yeah.
So basically, because I'm pretty sure I did it online.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you have to read the ordinance before you get to this, filling out the-
Get to the spot.
Of course, of course, I read it.
Yeah, yep.
And then I sort of, I'm the impression that Tony checks a button or whatever.
I'm sure he reviews those.
But you guys do, too?
Well, no, I mean, I'm speaking like Tony, us administration, you know, in that regard. No, but Tony would, him or his designee would be reviewing those. That's another good point, though, Pete, because they're very aware of when those days are, too. So it's in the right hands and in the right spot.
Yeah, they would just say, nope, can't give you that permit.
Also, could be someone, well, this is a system thing, but it'd be something along the lines of, you have to put your phone number in for the permit, and then, once you put your phone number in, some, whoever would be responsible, if we get in those no burn days, just throw out a text thread out, saying like, be aware, your permit is invalid for today, there is a burnt, no burn.
The other thing is, is that communications are changing as far as emergency situations go in the village. We're implementing new software to do that, we use mostly for public safety, but air quality days would be days, that you would get a code red notification as well. So, not really the right forum to go into all of that, but I, but they're valid concerns, and I think that they're, it's kind of covered in a couple of different ways.
So, do we have a motion for a recommendation to council on this with changes? Or do we need another month to go over this?
I can make a motion, so I think we're ready. Unless anyone has any objections. So I would move that we recommend council approval of this ordinance as written with modifications that we discussed this evening.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Just for clarification, now, what are we doing with the bonfires and the campfires?
So for the ordinance definition of the state, clarified for note two, right? So where's the reference for note two?
Yeah, I've got that.
Okay, and then for bonfire and campfire, I think.
The idea of, under open burning, just add a sentence that says-
Oh, okay, under open burning?
Not, yeah.
This does not.
It's not included.
Bonfires and campfires are included.
Yeah, and then, did-
And then the definition-
And then definition of wood, the type of-
Yeah.
Clarification, natural, like, yeah, lumber, all right. Thank you. All right, so we do have visitors here, and we are now at eight o'clock. I was, I propose that we do a switch to the agenda and move new business up, and, and then come back to B, if that's okay?
Sure.
Okay, with it.
Is anyone opposed to that? Okay, so.
I can actually give a little bit of an introduction on this, if that works.
That would be awesome.
So what we have here under new business is going to be the new Oyster Bar that's opening up. You would have looked at the original site plan, however, that was for interior renovations only. We became aware that they were doing some exterior renovations, and that was not considered under the original site plan. So that went back, it was, the plan was modified, it has already gone through HDC. It has a lot of support, and I, from an administrative perspective, don't have anything that would, you know, that would be complicated in this. However, given the fact that originally we reviewed a site plan that was for interior renovations, and there's going to be a shed and an outdoor fireplace, clearly some exterior renovations, it's appropriate to bring back the new site plan proposal and get approval by the planning commission.
Okay, that makes more sense to me.
Yeah, I know that there was some back and forth there, and, you know, we've been working very closely with everyone that's here tonight on this project, and we ushered it through the HDC over there and talked about it, so really it's just making its rounds, dot our i's and cross our t's, and these things have been added to the project from the original site plan.
So the, I did put together a letter, I don't know whether it got into your packets.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
A public hearing is required, so the only action that's required this evening is to schedule the public hearing for next month. And there is some additional information that I thought ought to be put on the site plan. So, did you get a copy of my letter?
Yes.
The applicants?
I did not.
Hi, here's a, here's a copy. Not too much additional information. One thing I was concerned about, I noticed on the south property line, there's some overhead wires. And I just want to make sure that the fireplace isn't going to burn up the wires. So I need to know what the setback is of the fireplace in relation to those wires.
Well, my name is Mike Yeager, I'm from Skill Four Architects. Thank you for the opportunity tonight. I think if you scroll down on there, there is a dimension, it might be hard to see there.
The wires are not showing, though.
Yeah, so I guess, I believe the wires are on the property line.
If you can-
It's, if you can see the pole there behind the shed.
Oh, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Is that actually a chimney?
It is a chimney.
There's flue gas going up there?
It would, yeah, it's gonna be a gas fireplace.
Venting?
Yes, correct, yes.
So there is combustion going out that top of it?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Combusted gas going out the top of it?
Yeah, not, not wood, or, yeah, correct.
No scrap wood.
Yeah, no scrap wood. Or treated lumber.
I mean, do you know, do you know that, I mean, most of these things, you know, this is a gas appliance, right?
Correct.
Yeah, and very often, by the time you get up that high, you're not talking about very high temperatures, which would alleviate the concern for the wires, but it sounds like we don't know that information, so we better make sure the wires are not in the way.
You can see the wires in the photo.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, natural gas, propane?
Uh, yes, correct, natural gas.
Natural gas, okay.
The ruling for a wood stove on your property is like ten, is three feet above the-
Well, I'm just saying, natural gas, the open burning doesn't apply to natural gas, so we're good there.
Got it.
I don't, I don't see a problem with the parallel, but, okay. So we'll, so I guess we have a motion to have a public hearing on, to, for review of the site plan. I mean, we'll need a motion for that to move forward with this plan.
Is there anything that we need to do for that? Any applications or anything?
No.
Okay.
Nope, you'll be all set. So after, if that moves forward, we will go ahead and put out notice, and you'll get right on that agenda. We already have copies of the site plan. I think just clarifying that setback with the wires would be helpful for that.
Additional information.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to read this, is there, are there any footnotes that you could tell me?
Some additional information, like the materials of the shed and, and things like that.
Okay, yeah, we could, we could put that on the drawing if need be.
Yeah.
We also have the HDC application, maybe that would be helpful to attach, because that would have all been discussed during the, the HDC meeting.
Yes.
And was approved. It's already been to HDC, it approved. So materials have been approved, you know, everything down to aesthetic, color, where it's positioned, size, all of that has been approved by the HDC already last month.
And there's no zoning considerations on this at all?
Nope, not at all. So that's why it wouldn't be appropriate to take to ZBA. And the conversation that happened at HDC was really healthy, and I, I don't think you left with any direction or changes from that. It was all agreed to and approved at that time. So this has already been through HDC.
I'm gonna make a motion to have a public hearing in the month of February for just-
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Great, thank you. So we'll, and the notice, is it here?
It'll be here, I'll go ahead and follow up with an email for you, but it'll be our reg- It'll be our regularly scheduled planning commission meeting, and like, we had the burn ordinance open meeting tonight, we'll do that, the same thing.
And if you get a chance to put your, your architect's stamp on the plans-
Sure.
And I know we've got, like, you know, it still says Koch and Sparker on the drawings, the previous owner.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, we can, we can put our stamp on it.
Why not?
Yeah, sure, yeah, I'm happy to.
We appreciate you being here and coming up to talk about it.
We're learning a lot about firewood and everything.
Natural one.
Well, it's important, we had to pass the fire, before you could put a fireplace in.
I know, that's what we were talking about, yeah.
Sure.
My name, my name's Nick Eftis, I'm the, I'm gonna be the executive chef and partner over at the, at the Oyster Bar. So just to clarify, so the shed, I understand your concerns about the wires with the fireplace, and I could, you can clearly see them in the picture, even though, you know, they're, they're backaways. But for the shed, my question to you guys is, I'll be honest with you, I was hoping, we're all hoping, because we're getting ready to open, is to, and we, this shed is coming from Tough Shed, we're ordering it from them directly, they will not, it's built to order, and it takes about two to three weeks for us to get it from the day we order it. We're ho, we were hoping to get the shed, the slab, anyway, we're hoping to get the shed in place when we open, before we open.
Which is when?
Hopefully, like, last week of February, first week, first, second week of March. Realistically, probably first or second week of March. So I, I was, we're hoping to walk out of here tonight, being able to go place an order for a shed tomorrow or in the next week or so. What are your guy, can we, can we split the difference? I understand the concerns and hesitation on the-
I wish we could.
Yeah.
Wish we could.
Okay, I figured I'd try.
Yeah.
We have to have the public hearing on it.
I, you know, yeah, we have to have the public hearing on it.
Okay.
HDC didn't have concerns with it, we don't have any big concerns to follow up on it here tonight, but the public hearing has to take place for that, so.
Okay.
And then it goes to our council, right?
Well, no.
No, not for a site plan review.
Not for a site.
Okay, all right. So right after our next meeting in March, right?
Have you?
Although, the only thing that comes to mind, it, the shed requires a cement pad under it.
That's correct.
And there's, it's, the cement pad is gonna be additional cement covered. I, I, you know, again, it's just the zoning thing.
I believe the, the cement, what was required for the shed was a cement slab and a rat wall.
A footing, yeah.
Yeah.
Footing.
And I believe that those are in the plans.
They are, yeah, but you gotta dig the hole.
Okay, real quick.
So get that done.
Chris is looking something up. Because if it comes to our public hearing, or public hearing is after.
Yeah.
It'll be March.
Yeah, that's what he's double checking.
Planning commission is the recommending body, and the village council is, takes final action.
On the site plan?
Yes.
So is there?
Is there appetite for a special meeting?
Yeah, that's right.
I mean, I would be in support of that.
Main Street would support it. Does council support it? Liaison, could you get a straw poll?
I mean, I'm thinking not special meeting for council, what's our notice time on the public hearing?
Fifteen days.
Could we do a public hearing prior to the February council meeting, which would, of you guys to hold the public hearing for it, and then that way, it could go to council for approval on the second Monday of February and not wait another month? Fifteen.
Fifteen?
So we don't have to hustle, we'd have to get it done tomorrow, but I don't see, if this body would be willing to schedule a special meeting to hold the public hearing in order to, you know?
We're talking-
Literally just a public-
We're talking Wednesday the fifth of February?
I will not be here.
I will.
We need all four, we need at least four.
I can make the fifth work.
I can make it work.
Okay, I can be here.
Four of us.
Okay, we got four. We're fine.
Oh, yeah.
I'm gonna follow up with our applicants with an email that outlines this, but what I'm hearing from this body right now is that they're willing to make an exception and hold a special meeting for you on the fifth to have your public hearing, which, if you get your approval, then could move to council the following Monday. And that would be the final approval you would need. Otherwise, if we don't do that special meeting, you're gonna have to wait till the March council meeting.
Okay.
So.
I'd really appreciate it.
So do you have a question about that? Because you do have to dig a footing, and you gotta go down forty-two inches, it's cold, the ground's frozen. Do you guys think you'll be ready for the shed? So that we have to have, that, because we are willing to sacrifice one of our evenings for you. But I, you know, it's cold out there, I'm not sure how many contractors are willing to dig holes at this time of year.
That's their concern.
It is their concern, it is their concern. But, you know, we, obviously, we, you know, special meetings cost us money, too. We have to bring our-
And your time.
We have to, well, don't worry about us, but.
We'd have to give you invite the twenty first.
We have to bring the administration in and stuff, and it does, it goes on our budget. So like, if you, if you say, like, look, we're not gonna have our footing in until March fifteenth, let us know, and we won't have to have a special meeting, but we're gonna try, right?
Yes, I think that's a valid point, Pete, because if something were to change between now and the special meeting, if you could notify us, obviously, we wouldn't want to continue with that.
So you'll email me?
I'm gonna email the team the path of what you need to do moving forward, and then I would be prepared on the fifth to answer questions. We'll, we'll get your HDC application out, but on your materials that you'll be using, and we have this concern about the wires, so let's be prepared to answer those. If we're successful on the fifth, you'll move the following Monday then over to the council meeting.
Really appreciate it. We just want to keep the area nice and tight, and, you know, we take a lot of pride in this place, we're putting a lot into it, so.
Yeah.
The villagers are excited, you know, we want to support these projects, and so we're- The villagers are excited, you know, we wanna support these projects and, so we're, we're gonna see what we can do to make that. That work and still follow all the rules, so.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Ray, man.
All right, um, so we already had a motion for a public hearing?
Oh, motion to hold a special public hearing, February 5th.
Second.
And Sarah, are you still seconding the, the...
Sure, yes, second.
No.
She had seconded the previous one, that's...
Sorry.
I wanna keep Dana's notes straight. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good, unanimous. All right, um, so we'll move back now to discussion on the amendment for cellular service Chris, would you mind just...
Yes, I have a letter dated December 24th. We revised the ordinance, um, there were three issues that came up at the last meeting. Uh, the first one dealt with section 126503 subsection D2 dealing with co-location on page six. And originally we had listed four, quote, "justifiable reasons" unquote, for not co-locating and Wally Haley, uh, the communications law attorney, suggested substantially revising this provision by substituting language from section 15, uh, subsection six of act 365. And the, the Planning Commission expressed concern that the language from the act by itself allows the applicant to dismiss co-location without giving it serious consideration. So, um, we talked to Peter, the village attorney, and, um, we believe it's reasonable to reinsert the four justifiable reasons along with the language from section 15 six of act 365. So I think everybody should be comfortable with that one. Then section 126503 subsection D6, minimum setbacks, top of page seven. Again, based on discussion with Mr. Haley, we had included a provision that would have allowed the village council, upon receiving a recommendation from the Planning Commission, to adjust the setbacks rather than going to the zoning board of appeals and the Planning Commission expressed concern that this action amounts to a variance and should be handled by the zoning board of appeals. And we agree with the Planning Commission, uh, so does, uh, the village attorney, so the provision has been deleted. Now the one that's, the difficult one. Section 126503D13, uh, radio frequency emissions, that's at the bottom of page seven. Uh, the requirement that the applicant submitted report that provides peak monthly power outputs was deleted from the revised ordinance. The Planning Commission strongly argued in favor of retaining this provision. Upon further discussion, the village attorney confirmed his firm belief that act 365 does not give the village the authority to require submitting such information. Even though it would require relatively small effort to receive and store monthly peak power output information on a computer, there's no one at the village hall who's qualified to review and interpret the reports. Furthermore, it's the FCC's responsibility and it has the sole authority to monitor and enforce the peak power output. So that provision, uh, we have not changed. And we've received further communication from Wally Haley's firm and, um, he's expressed two additional concerns, uh, that, um, I wanted to bring to your attention.
That's not in this memo, though.
That's not in this memo, it came relatively recently. Uh, first, um, affects 126503B1, which is on page five of the regulations. And it deals with new support structures in the right of way that are equal to or less than forty feet in height. And, um, he is now contending, which seems to be in conflict with what he said when, when Meg and Peter and I met with him. He's now contending that they should be permitted through administrative review rather than going through site plan review. So we're, um, we're not comfortable with that one.
Okay, so no change for, is recommended?
Pardon?
No changes recommended from, for, um, for us to make a change for that?
Well, I think Peter's, um, still investigating that one with Wally Haley.
Okay, even though you're, so you're not in favor of it, but we still need to do more work on it.
Can you, can you restate that just quickly, Chris? Where is that on the document?
On page five. It's, uh, 126503 subsection B1. It would be the second bullet point, so, um, where it says, "Site plan review shall be required for the following activities."
Right here.
It says installation of new wireless support structures used for small cell wireless communication facilities. So what Mr. Haley is saying now is that that should say, I guess, um, what it should say is, he's suggesting for facilities that are over forty feet in height. And then under item two, uh, administrative review shall be required for proposals to co-allocate on existing support structures and for new wireless support structures that are equal to or less than forty feet in height, which, um...
So he's going back on the discussion.
We're not comfortable with that.
Yeah.
Right.
And, I mean, from, from my perspective too, administratively, we want, we, we felt like site plan approval was an important step and that we should take and, and during our discussion, that was where we had landed, so.
We, I'm, I agree with you.
So currently the letter we have dated 24th, as of this letter, is now, hold off on it, cause we currently recommend it as is here. Are we still arguing with Haley?
Yeah, I think we're gonna hold off and wait to see what Peter comes up with after he...
So if there's no change from Peter and no change to this document, we can hold a public hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
As long as we agree to have a public hearing?
But we have to wait to hear from Peter first, as well.
Do we?
Well...
We could...
Can we contingent it?
Yeah, absolutely. And, and when that change, I mean, I, I will take the responsibility for following up on that, making sure that we are moving forward with the public hearing and if anything changes, I'll get that communicated, but, uh, for us, we can definitely schedule one contingent upon that, if, if the board is comfortable.
Any discussion?
Want some discussion?
I'm just a little, so is this, so he obviously has a stake because he's part of this company and he just keeps revisiting our proposed ordinance and he keeps offering notes and advice and suggestions, right? Okay, so I'm just trying to understand, I feel like we did our due diligence, we met with him, we got the information.
They ended up in a good conversation and then comes back a week and a half later with this letter fighting the conversation.
That's, that's where I'm just feeling a little...
It's bad faith, in my opinion.
Yeah, it feels a little uncomfortable for me, so.
Okay.
But I just wanna clarify that, that it was, we had, we had, you guys already had the discussion and then this was a follow-up.
Right.
Yeah.
That no one said, hey, tell us, like, more, I just am unsure of how he just keeps adjusting, I guess, or why.
I think that it's also, I mean, I absolutely agree with what you're saying, he also, Wally has been seen as sort of like an outside expert in this, as someone who's worked for a really long time in the field. So we're not just meeting with someone that is affiliated with a company that's directly, you know, could be related here, you know, we are relying on him for some sort of, some...
Sort of tease.
Yes, and so, and that's really what we saw, our meeting was really productive, multi- three, four, three and a half hours of picking through it and that's what we saw, so, um, but yeah, that, he has other perspective too, but yes.
Okay.
I just would hate to see it turned into a negotiation rather than a drafting of a...
So, so when Peter says he's gonna stop and review, that's a more, Peter on behalf of the village is going to do some legal research and see how that would best serve us as the village and from that perspective. If Peter comes back and his recommendation is not to make that change, then, you know, you have this contingent, hopefully a contingent public hearing when we move forward. If Peter going out, you know, finds reason why that should be incorporated in his opinion, we'll report that back.
And you, I thought you said there was two things, that was one?
Yeah, the second one is, um, on the same page, um, the fees and timelines for administrative review are not well stated. The revised ordinance says to refer to chapter 1440, which references permits, bonds and deposits. I do not find administrative review fees and there's no timeline referenced. I was just, just copying and altering the table used for the site plan review. We have no problems with that, that's a simple thing to do.
This is clarifying, and the ordinance.
Okay.
So that would be a modification then to...
Uh, the bu, the very last item on page five.
Yeah. Okay.
Are we ready to make a motion for public?
Stuart?
So I, I just, you know, I understand why we can't enforce the radio frequency emissions. I feel like our villagers had legitimate concerns, um, and we tried putting verbiage in there that would help them understand and we, that we're hearing them and we're trying to support their concerns, um, so I am a little frustrated. I don't think that we need to have experts here in the village, um, in the village office to actually monitor. Um, it is mostly a data storage and we could do a simple FOIA request rather than having to go through the bureaucracy of a company to get data to support villagers' concerns. So I understand why, um, it was removed, um, it's just I feel like we're letting some of our neighbors down.
So do you, you said you think they had legitimate concerns?
I, I think their, I think their concern was legitimate.
So in, I guess, because I do think the underlying issue, and it was one I tried to get our commission involved with early on, um, was the, was the issue of the legitimacy of the concerns in one regard, um, but can you elaborate on what you felt were legitimate concerns?
Well, I feel like that they were concerned with the EMF and that, the, and that's a valid thing to worry about, um, and being able to monitor or at least have an idea of what, how much energy is being output by these regularly would be, um, or at least peak power would be helpful for them to know if they, if they're worried about it.
The, the issue is really enforceability, though, so we can't re, put that on them and require those monthly reports. So if you come to the village and you were to ask for a, a report that we never received, we don't have enforceability under the state act to even collect that data, so the answer would be, it's not here because they haven't submitted it and we have no teeth to even enforce this. And in return, it is concerning that, let's say we, we did get a report that showed something that's not of anyone in this village's responsibilities, so then we had a report that said that there were EMFs, but we weren't taking care of it, that's a liability for the village as well. So because we cannot enforce that here, it just opens us up for liability. Uh, access to information is important, but unfortunately, the liability that it opens us up to in this position is, is not something that we would recommend absorbing.
Yeah, and I, and I understand that, I think that, that I'm, I'm more, I was more making sure that we did our best to make sure that those, we had a huge group of neighbors that came when this site plan came into us the first time and I wanna make sure they feel heard and supported.
Right, and that's good. I think, I don't think we are addressing it, um, because it's the issue of safety. I don't think we've answered their questions, um, obviously there's uncertainty on that issue. I mean, because it, it was a mixture of not in my backyard, I think that was most of it. Um, because, I think it's related to what you're saying.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it, I think it gets to the core of what the issue is. No one was willing to say, you know, um, it's the village's position that 5G is safe to health. Um, and until we do that, you know, we're not gonna, we, we either decide either way, that the village does not want any more 5G infrastructure, um, or that we do, um, because you're gonna have a minority of people, um, saying that, it's, it's hard, it's hard to say. And, and while still respecting, respecting the position that, you know, it's not a closed case, but we, you know, it is no legal grounds whatsoever to deny a tower at this point.
Right.
You know, you don't, you don't have any legal ground to stand on.
Right.
But it's, it's, it's showing a respect to those concerns, um, without coming to a conclusion or position on it. And I think, you know, there's, there's, we were afraid to come to a position on it, I think, is what it amounted to. And I get it, it's difficult, but, um, so at least it was an effort to at least respect those people who have concerns of health with 5G. We tried.
Yeah, no, we absolutely did, we did everything the, the concerned citizens and residents had asked us and right here, section three in the, in the letter, nail in the coffin is, it's the FCC's responsibility and has sole authority to monitor and enforce peak hour, power output. Like, it literally is something, it is out of our hands.
Understood.
Yeah, so, I agree with you, it sucks, but we have no power.
So do you wanna, is, do we want to make a motion with contingent on Pete, Peter's research?
I will make a motion to hold a public hearing at the next scheduled, uh, planning meeting on the 19th in contingent with Peter's findings.
He planned to last time, I'm gonna let Pete do it.
Two wants to second it. All right, Linda, there's nothing to second today.
Your turn, Max.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, can I get a motion to...
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourn, second?
Aye.
Oh, me. Oh, look at her, sorry! It's right in her mouth.
Linda, second, sorry.
Should I do every motion tonight?
All in favor, right? Yeah, I think you did every motion.